The school board meeting for the Putnam County School District is now called to order for Tuesday, June the 18th, 2024 at 3:30 PM. We'd like to thank all of you for coming to join us this afternoon. Hopefully, we will take care of whatever your concerns might be. And we do have some recognition of young people that are doing great things in the district. And as always, we are pleased to have you here and your parents. So at this time, Mr. Phil Leary will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And our invocation will be done by Minister Daron Arman of Mount Tabor First Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you today and we want to just take this moment and this opportunity that you have given us to say thank you, Lord. We thank you for this another day, God. We thank you for the beauty of this day. Father, we don't take any of these things for granted and we don't take it lightly, God, that you blessed us to be alive today, God. We say thank you, Jesus. Thank you for the gift of life because it is so precious and it's so supernatural, God, that we couldn't do it for ourselves. But God, you did it for us and we say thank you, Jesus. Father, we thank you for this administration. We thank you for every school that is represented in this district, every, every school, every student, every parent, God. And we just lift up our district before you right now in Jesus's name. We pray, God, that you would cover our students even, even over the summer break, that you would cover them under your wing and in your blood in Jesus's name. We pray for their protection and for their continued education. We pray, God, for the wisdom of this administration, God, that you would give them what they need in order for our students' education to be top priority within our district. Father, we thank you for what you're doing. God, we pray for the unity among this team, God, in Jesus's name. And God, may the issues at hand, God, may you give them guidance and may you give, may you order their steps as to what they need to do, God, in order for all concerned to be well. We say thank you for this superintendent, God. We thank you for every teacher, Lord. We thank you for every principal and, God, for every administrative and support staff. God, continue to bless and keep them in the mighty name of Jesus. And God, we, we are reminded, God, that you told us in your word to acknowledge you in all of our ways and you will direct our paths. So we say thank you, Lord, and it is in Jesus's name we pray. And we all said amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Minister Daron. Okay, at this time, we will move into our presentations. First one will be the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council, followed by our retirement recognition by Mrs. Tanya Whitehurst in that order.
Good afternoon, guests, and good afternoon, board. Dr. Surrancey, I think at this time is going to come and share a little bit about the work we do with our Superintendent's Student Advisory Group. This council is, or these students are selected by the principals at each, each school, including Putnam Virtual School, Mellon, and all four of our comprehensive high schools. And they are representative of a diverse group of students from multiple grade levels. And this year, we had 26 students. We met multiple times. We've never had all students at every meeting because, as you can imagine, these are students who are also very active in their schools, they're leaders in their schools. But we typically have upwards of around 20 at each meeting. And Dr. Surrancey, I'll tell you a little bit about what, what they provide him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you for organizing all that. And I know from time to time, even today, you have to go and help with transportation and all that, but I understand that. And I know having this in the summertime is kind of difficult because a lot of those students are on vacation and we certainly understand that and appreciate it. But the ones that are here today, thank you for doing that and we definitely want to recognize you. But just a few comments about that. I find our Superintendent Advisory Council very, very rewarding for me personally, and I've done that however many years, several years. But you know, it's one thing about talking to teenagers or listening to teenagers, they tell you exactly what is on their mind. They don't dress it up. They just, they shoot from the hip. And that's what we want to hear. And we, we definitely appreciate the student voice. And those are our customers too, by the way. So they tell us what's going on good and what's not so good, and we try to address that. We did, we did something a little different this year, it was kind of neat, is we had, of course, the students from the four different high schools, but we ask them, we mixed them up where they had to talk to someone from another school and ask them to talk about, you know, different things that we could do. And it's almost like we couldn't get, keep them from talking after that because they just so much enjoyed talking to students from other schools. And I think it really brought in kind of a, it kind of enlightened them, but there are students from other schools that might have some of the same issues they have and some of the different issues. So to me, that was very rewarding and very helpful. And I think more than that, it's going to help move our district forward because our students are our most important voice and we definitely want to have an avenue to hear their voice. So Ashley, thank you again. I know we want to recognize some of the ones that are here today.
Yeah, so I am going to take this time to share with you all of the names of the students. And if they are here, if they could come up, and we'll do a group photo with Dr. Surrancey, yep, and our Ms. Gilliard, please. So the first students are from Crescent City Junior/Senior High School. We have Janelle Lara, Mia Paul, Shay Delaney. And most of these students, they're very, very, they're very good about letting me know and a lot of these students, of course, are either working or on vacation right now. So I didn't want to let you know that. Emmy Delaney and Christian LaShane. And those were our students who represented Crescent City Junior/Senior High. From Interlochen Junior/Senior High, we have Diana Valdez, she's here, Cameron Ott, Jack Pavlik, and Anthony Ennis. From Mellon Learning Center, we have Carolyn Christensen, Ladarius Graham, and Marcus Wilson. From Palatka Junior/Senior High School, Charnell Q., Isabella Thomas, Jose Marie Saldana Morales. And Ashton Hodge from Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Tiana Massey Henderson, Richard Session, and Cassie Gauz. From Putnam Virtual School, Clarence Suggs, Natalie Hardy, I know Natalie is here. And Carter Suggs. And then from QI Roberts Junior/Senior High School, Aiden Stewart, Brianna Smith, who we know is here. And Elijah Ibanez. Let's give them all a round of applause. And I would like to share, and Dr. Surrancey can share, tomorrow, our podcast will come out for the week and you interviewed Jose Marie and Lance, two of our seniors who graduated this year. So be sure to check that out and learn more about their adventures and what all they are doing. And also, I would like to share, I don't know, a lot of, you may not know Natalie. Natalie has been on the council for quite a few years. Natalie attends Putnam Virtual School because she studies ballet. So Natalie always brings a really interesting perspective to the group because she has taken a different path in her journey and it has, it has been really cool to get to know her. And then Brianna from QI Roberts is currently interning. Kim Simmons has done some work with our group. We do have different departments that come in and work with our students when they need some feedback. And Brianna is currently doing an internship with Alongside. If you're not familiar with Alongside, it's an app our students use. It's like a tier-one interactive app where students can get feedback and, and, and talk to mental health counselors. And she's currently doing an internship with them. So we're just really excited about these students and it does provide us an opportunity here at the district to really get to know students, which is a real, a real pleasure for me since I've been at the district and not in a school building. So I appreciate the work. I appreciate you guys being here today and Dr. Surrancey for giving up a lot of time, of his own time, to, to have, to listen to students and student voice, so.
Emmy Delaney, we had on our podcast last week.
Yes, we did.
So you can actually go back, it's on our website.
Yeah, yeah.
And this year, I try not to talk much. I just try to get them to talk and it's really encouraging.
Yeah, yeah. Lance, Lance is, I think Lance and Natalie, how many years have y'all, this is the second year, I think, I know you, Natalie, at least two, maybe three, is it just two?
Lance is our drone pilot.
Yeah.
And he films all the football games at like time.
Yeah.
And I think you're having to turn the reins over to somebody else now, having to train them.
Anyway, so, thank you guys for letting us share these great students.
Congratulations to him.
Got it?
Oh, Mom.
Great, thank you guys.
Probably.
Uh-oh. So while she is bringing that up, I'm Tanya Whitehurst, Executive Director of Human Resources. And it is always an honor to recognize our employees. We get to, you know, HR, we get to celebrate when they, when they come to us. And then we also get to celebrate when they have served many years and are making the choice to retire and go to their next avenue of life. So today, we would like to start out with by honoring Michelle Gagon. So she has been with the district for 30 years. And most recently, she was cafeteria manager, which you've been cafeteria manager for several years, at Kelly Smith Elementary School. So Michelle, if you will come on up. Sorry, I didn't get these. Next, we would like to recognize Mr. Teddy Hell Senior. He is a mechanic at Transportation Central and he has been with the district for 14 and a half years. And we would also today like to recognize Ms. Sheila Spangler, who has been with the district for 35 years. And most recently, has been serving at federal programs as one of our paraprofessionals. And she has been the face of who, the people who are coming in the door. You're, you're seeing her right there. So thank you, Ms. Sheila. And our other two are not able to be here, but I do just want to recognize, we had Mr. Timothy O'Rourke, who had been a teacher at Crescent City Junior/Senior High. He had been with the district for five years, but he had been with Florida Retirement System for right at 11. And then we also have Ms. Tina Stamper, who was one of our pre-K associates at Jenkins Elementary School, and she had been with the district for 28 years.
She worked with Mia at Price Middle School.
She went to school or was it?
Price Middle School. She was in our cafeteria when I got there. Yes, yes.
She just laid that up there.
Okay, we are now ready for public comments. If you have not filled out a form and you wish to address the board, you need to fill this out and get it to Mrs. Michael. We do have one thus far. It's regarding Crescent City K-6, the GMP, and it's Mr. Reed Matthews, and you remember.
Yes, ma'am. I think I'm good by now.
I know you got it. All right, thank you.
Reed Matthews, 111 East Groveland Lane, East Palatka. Just have some concerns, obviously, I think y'all probably all know that by now. And so I'm just here, probably final vote tonight, but I can't, I only get a little bit, with me speaking at the beginning of the, of the meeting, I only get bits and pieces. So, you know, gather more information, come back. So some of my concerns, well, one is the Crescent City K-6. Do we currently have 1,098 students that take up that K-6? And are we only building a school for 1,100? That's, these numbers I'm pulling, I'm all pulling from y'all's website. I'm not just pulling them out of the hat. So not all of them line up. So that's one of my main concerns, only building a school for two extra students for spending probably $80 million when it's all said and known. We're building a GMP, but that GMP does not include all the costs associated with the build. So if we're only building two extra student stations there, you know, just a half mile down the road, according to y'all's website, we have 959 students for the 7 through 12, but yet we're building either a school for 1,200 or 1,320 student stations there. So, you know, if, if one of them, we're only building .18% more and then this, another one, we're building 25 to 37.6% more, there's no consistency there. I don't know where the ball got dropped or if the information is wrong on the school board's website, but that's a major concern of mine when we're talking about spending this kind of money. Another one is, you know, are we really going to be able to build, buy, get this built by the beginning of 2025 school year? If not, why are we rushing this? You know, one of my things is, is that when I, I do a lot of remodeling and stuff, I mean, I just got my house painted end of last year, I mean, I did a lot more than that. But anyways, when I went to the contractor and said, hey, I need my house painted, he said, well, I can give you a price and do it, you know, in a month, or I can give you a price and do it here the next four months. The price was about 25% difference. So obviously, we have a big bill going on already right now. So is that why this one is so much more than the Palatka school? I understand last time, you know, the guy from Ajax there said that, obviously, there's more exterior walls, we have more bathrooms and classrooms. Well, if that same school's good enough for Palatka A, why isn't it good enough for, if we're talking about square footage to square footage, if that school's in Palatka A is good enough for there, why isn't that same model good enough in Crescent City? So that's another one of my concerns there. Let's see, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this will probably be the most expensive purchase in school board history. So, you know, keep, keep all this stuff in mind whenever you go to vote here in just a little while. You know, I'm not sure, Don, you weren't, whenever we did the contract that's with Ajax, you weren't an attorney then, have you had a chance to review that contract?
I'm not really looking at it.
But obviously, I know, the only, that, it's.
It's already been signed.
It's been signed, but we, obviously, the contract doesn't really go into effect until we got the GMP to go with it, right? Right? I mean, you don't have to approve the GMP, so the contract, I mean, you have to pay them for the services they've rendered, I think. But, so my biggest thing is that 20%, I keep bringing up. You know, it's just a one-line item on there as far as the contractors get 20% of any savings. You know, it's, to me, it's, it's a one-sentence thing and it's not very well spelled out of what savings we're talking about. Last week, they said it doesn't involve the contingency part of the contract, but I don't see it in black and white in the contract. As you can see, today, we have the change order for Palatka A. These change orders can be millions of dollars, you know, for the tax savings. Is that part of it? Is that, do you think it's part of the savings? If it's not, it's being black and white and not just the guy coming up here and saying, hey, no, that's not part of it. I don't think that's as legally binding when we're talking about a $70 million contract as something else, you know, whether, whether it's in black and white. That's another one of my main concerns. I mean, you can see, like I said, the change order for Palatka A today is, I think, $2 million. It looks like there was another several million already change order, negative change order. So that would mean if we got $6 million in negative change order, that'd be $1.2 million we're paying these contractors here, unless it's in black and white. I just, I don't think that it's, you know, if I was, I'm not an attorney, but I deal with contracts all the time, I wouldn't feel comfortable with it in the current wording that it currently is at. You know, they gave you three options, I think, today. I mean, I don't think those are your only three options. I mean, I think no is another option until we get the zoning approval. Here are my three minutes there, I'll try to wrap this up. But those, I mean, the, the school size, as far as how many student stations we currently need versus how many we're building, two, is not a lot. .18% more when we're building 20 plus, 25 to 37% more right down the road. So with it being the most expensive purchase in school board history, I would remind you to do your due diligence. I know that's a, it's a big thing, everybody wants new schools, and I think we're going to get new schools, but let's go about it the right way. Does, have any, I didn't see it in the packet on here, I'll try to wrap this up, is, we got the GMP. The last time you voted on Palatka A GMP, they also included all the additional costs. I haven't seen that in this packet like it was in the last. Have any of you seen those additional costs? We were talking, it was close to $8 million before, so if that's percentages-based, you know, the other, other contract was less. So you have the GMP plus $8 million in Palatka A. Here, you're just looking at the GMP. I haven't seen them show you what these architectural engineering, furniture fixtures and equipment. They had additional contingency. So if that's the case, we have another $8 to $10 million more on top of the 68-plus million you're voting on today. And I think if we're voting on this, we need these questions answered before we can make an educated decision. It's, it's a lot of money. It's, I mean, it's a whole lot of money. If we're not building a big enough school to, for the increased growth, why are we building it this way? Why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we take a step back and build it the right way and to accommodate growth? So those are my big concerns there. How much is it total? You know, the GMP only shows 68, but there's going to be another $8 to $10 million on top of that. It's not in your packet. And if it's not in your packet, shame on staff for not putting it in your packet. That's, it's not right. It's, it's like, it's like smoke and mirrors to me. Hey, we're only voting, what's only cost 68? No, it's really going to cost probably $78 million. And so if this is going to be more than we've already budgeted for the, what school are we, if we only have $3 million, $300 million, what school are we going to take this additional several million dollars away from? You know, some schools are like, this school's going to get 78 million, Browning Pierce is getting 16. Are we going to take it from Browning Pierce? We're going to take it from Interlochen Elementary or Jenkins Elementary, should I say? I mean, which other, one of these schools, where is this money going to come out? Who's budgets it going to come out of? So student stations, total costs, not just the GMP, and the contracts, I think a big one. Like I said, that's cost savings thing, and I think it's just, it's a one-line item, it's a one-sentence piece of that contract, which could implicate millions of dollars going one way or the other. And I, I think it needs to be reviewed before you vote on 70-plus million. I think it, I'm not an attorney, but I think there could be some room for misinterpretation there. So those, that's my concerns. Appreciate you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Matthews. Superintendent Surrancey, we will address this when we get to, to the GMP. So these questions, I've written them down and I'm sure you have them. So we, we will address those. All right. Any other public comments? All righty. With that being done, we are now ready for Item D, public hearing on item number one, adoption of amendment, excuse me, to policy number 642 for that individual purchasing card. All right.
You have questions or?
We have motion.
Staff, I mean.
And then we can question.
Okay. I'll move to approve Item D1 for discussion.
I'll second it.
All right. It's been motioned by Mr. Phil Leary that we adopt Item D1 for discussion and second by Mr. David Buckles. All right, we are ready now for questions? Yes, sir.
Well, not, not so much a question as, you know, the concerns and, you know, purchasing cards are something that's used in government across the board and at USDA, where I was State Director. You know, we had one purchasing card and it was for the administrative assistant that did handle all our travel and, you know, required for purchase for different things. You know, it does give me a little heartburn having that many purchasing, purchase cards and, and, you know, the limitation on the $1,500 was taken out and I understand that because of the cost of materials and everything. But I just, you know, want to caution that, you know, this, this is where problems arise. I've seen them happen many times. And I, I do think the language does clarify things better and that, you know, it's important that we really focus on doing what we're supposed to do with these cards. So my comments.
Okay. Any further comments, questions, concerns?
That's just like Phil, I've, I've seen them abused and.
Yes.
Used inappropriately, but that's something that we're going to have to monitor, so.
And then I'm sure there's someone in place that would take care of monitoring the question.
Yeah, and we have Kim Mann, our Director of Finance. Kim, can you come up and respond to that or answer questions? And I know Zach Simmons is here, our purchasing specialist. Our, our two CFOs are out of town today, so Kim and Zach are here to answer any questions.
Hey, I'm Kim Mann, I'm the Director of Finance. I'll say that I used to be the purchasing person over the P-cards. I'm not anymore, it's one of our CFOs. But there are controls in place. Say if somebody didn't turn in a receipt like they're supposed to, or they didn't sign something like they're supposed to, that we can get back with them. Now, we'll say we have to pay the bill every two weeks regardless. So we have had situations where we've had to pay something upfront and then we have to, we get the receipts and stuff after the fact. We, we do police it pretty well. And it's up to the, to the CFO to, to make sure that we get everything that we need. You have any specific questions about the process?
I don't.
How often are they used, especially, you know, when we're looking at a $20,000 limit in some cases? What, what's the?
Well, you would think 20,000 would be pretty substantial, but when it comes to summer travel, we may have to book like a whole, like a whole floor worth of rooms for different conferences. So we've even had to bump it up from there depending what we need. So it's sporadic throughout the year, I would say, definitely in the summer, when they're doing professional development for all the teachers and everything, it's going to be heavier. And then we'll see it kind of taper off throughout the year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
Any further questions, comments?
Thank you, Kim.
And thank you, Ms. Mann. All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Oh, do we do roll call? Yes, we better. Okay. Yes, sir.
All in favor of District One.
Adopt.
District Two.
Adopt.
District Three.
Adopt.
District Four.
Adopt.
District Five.
Adopt. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we are now ready for our consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull Item E7.
Wait, I was, I was.
Okay.
Yes, all right, all right. You're going to start with Mr. Leary, if you.
Okay, you start with him.
Yeah, beauty before age, right, Mr. Matthew?
There you go.
E7, F13, and G2.
Okay, Mrs. Wagner.
I'm just seeing if there's anything left to pull. Nope, I think I have some comments on them later on, but no, I believe all of mine were already named.
All right, and he named them. All right, Mr. Buckles?
I, we're going.
That was the one.
That was it. Phil got it.
All righty.
He's a real young kid.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Pickens?
That was E7.
Okay, all righty. And for me, E7 was going to be discussed and that will certainly answer some of Mr. Matthews's questions. Okay, let's get a motion to accept the rest of.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda minus E7, F13, and G2.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept the consent agenda for today minus E7, F13, and G2. It was second by Mrs. Wagner? No?
Phil.
Mr. Leary, Mr. Phil Leary, second. All right, we ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known. Let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposes? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll start with E7.
Madam Chair, I do have, whenever you find it appropriate, I do have Mr. Jared Dollar here representing the Bond Oversight Committee that has some comments, reference to that at whatever point you'd like to entertain.
Okay. All right, let's, let's take Mr. Dollar at this time, and then we will go into E7, F13, and G2. Thank you.
And we do have, again, Mr. Marini is here. He's been here before.
Yes.
Does he have any specific questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jared Dollar, 113 Vintage Lane, currently the Chairman of the Bond Oversight Committee Meeting, or Committee. We had a meeting last night, is what I meant to say. Not very often does our committee see something financial before it comes to you. I mentioned that the last time I was here, that we see everything afterwards.
Yes.
So at our meeting last night, we were able to see what y'all are about to go through. Before I get into that, I did want to recognize Dr. Hunter, that's part of our committee that's in the back, and Avette, Avette that's in, also here, Avette Jones. We had a good two-hour meeting last night, which is typical for us. Mr. Matthews, I have, you know that when the video comes out, you'll see a lot of your questions were asked and answered last night. So, so that's good. And next time we have an opening, we might just see you in our committee.
Maybe it's before, not after, yes.
But during that meeting last night, we did have a lot of questions. We got a lot of answers. Again, I'll thank Dr. Hunter for his insight because he has a lot of good questions that our committee just doesn't even know to answer, to ask, and he gets those answered. Your decision today on whether to approve the GMP has some very big financial consequences, biggest one being that if you don't approve it today, the financial consequence is much, much higher than if you do and something goes wrong with zoning. So our committee asked that I come and encourage you to approve the GMP today, given the information that's in your packet on the financial consequence by not doing so. And that's really all I had to report to you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Dollar.
Thank you, Jared.
All righty. For E7, we're going to ask Mr. Rayna if he will come up.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Thank you for having me. I did not write down each of the questions. Presenting myself again, at the last meeting, I was charged with coming to you guys and explaining the potential, you know, not to exceed worst-case exposure if, if the zoning annexation, for, for whatever reason, does not take place in August. I provided that information. It's the 895-305, which is on, I believe, the document you guys have. It's the scenario two, if you will. That number represents, you know, we've, we've talked to each of the subcontractors. We've talked to them about getting started and getting them locked in with some early subcontracts, which would lock in the, the values that we have in the GMP. And we could, you know, write some partial contracts to get them started on submittals that are appropriate to do and get them, you know, kind of going, and most importantly, again, lock in their numbers. That's critical. We hold them to a certain number of days after bidding to hold their bid, and we have bid bonds on that, and that is near, very close to the end. In fact, I think on the first set of bidders, it's actually passed. So it's, you know, our relationships that are keeping them willing to move forward. So that is the number, that does represent the number that is the worst case not to exceed. Again, you know, without going into super heavy detail, let's say we write a subcontract to the marker board subcontractor. We obviously don't need to get started right away immediately on marker boards, submittals. So, you know, if that entity, that firm, has not proceeded down the road far enough, and this is worst case, right? Hasn't, hasn't proceeded down the road enough, then, then those dollars will not have been spent. So again, the eight, the 895 is the worst-case scenario. If we can lock it in, the GMP would remain unchanged. Obviously, I think as we've, as we, as we have expressed, nobody can, can have the crystal ball, but the, the escalation that we're seeing is significant, and it's a significant dollar value for building the school. So our concern in, you know, kind of kicking the can down the road is that potential risk of losing those dollars with no gain at all. So you would just lose the dollars and have to go out to the street again, potentially being more expensive, which would be, in my opinion, very, very bad. So that's the, the summary 30,000-foot view of, of the exercise that I did. And this is based on feedback from our subcontractors and, and those types of things, not just us. So that is that summary. I'm glad to answer any questions that, yes, sir.
I, I would like to just, I, I've been through it. I've looked at it. Our attorney did what I asked him to do at the last meeting, and I think the whole board really directed him to meet with you guys and come up with a contingency.
Yes, sir.
I, I think that, you know, I'm not new to school construction because I've seen it before. I've seen these same things occur in different fashions and formats. I've seen bond issues challenged when I was a young guy, the same additional ways that this is going now, and I feel like you guys have met the, the wishes that I had anyway of the board, and I, I'm, think it's about time to go ahead and move forward and lock in what you've got, and don't wait and go down the road and this price triple or double, you know. It's just, and I'm glad you got the two gopher tortoises off of the property. We had to pay for a bunch of them at QI Roberts whenever we built that school.
Yes, sir.
If I may?
Yes.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
One of those questions that I believe Mr. Matthews had asked
Yes.
Was about the, the contract terms of 20%
Yes.
Going to 20% of any savings
Correct.
Going to you. Can you?
Right, yeah. So, so we, you know, we've built schools from Monroe County down in the Keys to Jacksonville. I mean, we've built, built schools in very many counties throughout the state of Florida and into Georgia. Anyway, you know, we found that, that, you know, some owners actually include those incentivizing type language in their, in their contracts because they understand that it incentivizes the team to save additional dollars. You have to save additional dollars and say GCs. This is not something that, which obviously ultimately winds up, you know, the goal is to make the project more successful. That's what the goal is. So the, but I can't speak to exactly what change orders are going through on the Palatka project. I, you know, if I were to guess or assume, I would say they're owner-direct purchase-related change orders, if that's accurate. So the answer to that question is a resounding no. We don't, you know, if you have a purchase order in the amount of, you know, $50,000 and we write you a deductive change order for that, we don't get any of that $50,000 in any kind of savings. There's a tax savings that goes back into the project for use at your discretion.
So what kind of savings would that 20% apply to?
So let's say we had made an estimate for porta potty use. This is a simple one, just that, you know, you know, for, for chemical toilet use, and, you know, the chemical toilets were X number of months at this dollar value, and, you know, we get done a month early, let's just say. And well, then, you know, you saved whatever, a couple thousand bucks, right? So that would be considered a savings to, you know, to, in the, in the general conditions. You, you can't really save any dollars in the, in the subcontract. The, the lion's share of this, you can't really save any dollars, you know, because the subcontracts are going to be what they are. It's the cost of the work. We don't control that other than just, you know, managing it. But that's the kind of example that I would give as a savings.
Have you, have you received savings like that in, in past?
We have, we have, we do have owners that, again, we have owners that actually have it in their sub, in their master agreement. So it's not uncommon for owners to recognize it as advantageous. That's, you know, again, in our experience, we find it to be advantageous, understand the concern, and, and as far as, you know, you know, I, I get it. I mean, I get the concern, but it, it, again, we, we kind of do these kind of things, you know, we would like to build your next school. We don't want to, you know, do something to you that's underhanded or anything like that. We, we're attempting to be the best stewards of your money that we can. And that's just, I don't know how else to, to defend it. That's, that's what it's for.
Mr. Bowler, one of the questions, excuse me, that was asked was the, the total, the projected number of seats or stations at the school. That would be in Crescent City, off the top of your head. Do you remember that?
We've got Greg, Greg here, Aura Thomas.
Okay.
Yeah, she has. Either one of us can answer it.
Yeah.
But I think the question was, why are we not building for growth as opposed to what we currently have? And the resounding answer is DOE won't allow us to do that.
Can't build more than two additional seats?
And, and we, I don't know where your number came from, and, and as Madam Chair, I'll be glad to answer and tell whoever you want to, whoever you want me to, but I don't know if you remember the initial numbers, but the numbers that we had were in line with what the projections were. We knew those a couple of years ago.
Right, yes, sir.
And that's locked in. And, and, you know, that's why you see school districts like, I don't know, St. Jost, because they're right next door, and everybody knows how they're going, but you see so many portables on the school side.
Right.
The, the beautiful thing about this site is there is room for growth, and you can add on to it.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Greg, Greg's our construction management guy, and he's the one that kind of oversees this for us, you know.
Design manager.
He's our design manager. And, you know, the kids in Crescent City don't deserve any less than kids in Palatka or St. Augustine. It just gets to the point that, you know, at some point, you're going to have to say, are we going to build a school, and we're going to lock in prices? Or we're going to sit down and not do the job? You've got Johnny Morris buying up property in Wallaca. You don't know what's going to happen down there. You've got a subdivision being proposed over here in East Palatka if kids are coming. This is the way construction works in Florida, and it's the way it, it works in America. You hire construction management firms to come in and advise us to do that. And, and we take their advice, and we, sometimes we can channel it in appropriate directions, and, and we make decisions we think, think are best for kids. I mean, until you lifelike people off a school campus, like we've done with train derailments at Crescent City High School, or you've had, you know, all the things that we've had go wrong on some of our school campuses, hurricane shelters for people, feeding kids in the summertime down there, they don't deserve any less of a facility than the kids somewhere else. And I just, you know, I've, I've heard it, and I've heard it, and I just think, you know, it, we've got to depend on our construction manager to do that, and we do have to have due diligence to watch over what's being done, but that's the purpose of hiring him in, in a nutshell. And that's what every school district in the state of Florida does. That's what Putnam County has done for 50 years. And I, I just, you know, at some point, you're going to have to make a decision here.
Okay. Mr. Leary?
Madam Chairman, thank you. You know, I think the question here today is not so much on the construction, the G, GMP, because I think you explained that very well
Thank you.
The last time. There are ancillary costs that, that I don't think we know specifically what they are, but they're going to be pretty substantial. That also will come out of the bond. I mean, you know, but what you've covered is the construction of the school.
Yes, sir.
So our question today is, you know, with respect to the property not being annexed or have the proper land use designation on the comp plan and the zoning, is do we throw the dice and, and assume that we're going to go on? So what I did between the last board meeting and this board meeting, and I actually informed our council that, you know, that I did it, so in case I get in trouble, but I actually put my lobbyist hat on and, and went and talked to people. And I'm fully confident now that we've got unanimous support for all of the, the land use and zoning changes that, that are coming, coming up, and, and that, you know, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that anymore. And believe me, I've, I've been in situations where, you know, you have to take somebody's word at it, and it's, it's, it's significant, but it's, it's to all of those elected officials in both city and counties benefit for us to move forward and get the school built. And I think it's a, it's absolutely an excellent site from a planning and land use standpoint. However, I will say, it is disappointing that the board, you know, finds ourselves in this position, you know, and at no fault of our own, you know, I want to be very clear about that. But things happen, and we're at this point, and so, you know, I, I personally think that we should move forward and, you know, accept the scenario one, and, and then just continue to work towards getting the school open. I, you know, it's going to be a daunting task to have it open by next fall, so, you know, the longer we, we wait, the longer it's going to, just the more time we'll have to wait to get the kids in there. So those are my comments.
Okay.
I would, just to
Mrs. Pickens?
To address the, the number of students, when we started this, it was, I'm thinking there was either 850 or 900 students at Middleton Bernie. Am I correct, Mr. Bowler?
You pulled sixth graders from the other school as well and add them to it is where I think the difference comes up. Because ones K through five, ones K through six.
No, I'm pretty sure that we had the number with the sixth graders.
On, on your website, it says 1,098, a COFTE.
Well, I know that they have had an increased enrollment, but if, if we were dependent upon DOE telling us how many student stations we could have.
Greg, Greg, is that something you can address?
We, we use the number DOE gave us is what we were working with at that time. I can't speak to what the website says now or anything, but we actually included extra seats, over 50 extra seats at that time.
Projections for extra 1,017.
Supposed to be decreasing?
1166.
If, if his answer, the 1166. DOE will only allow you to have two more there. Why are they allowing you to have 200 to 300 more a half mile down the road? It just doesn't make sense if, if one of them's decreasing, the other one's going to be decreasing. I just, I can't wrap my head around it, make it common sense, but maybe that's not what we're here for.
Well, I, I don't know. Didn't the state of Florida approve that funding of the high school?
And you're overseeing both projects.
Yeah, and it's a different funding mechanism. DOE
Yeah.
Controls their numbers
Totally different.
For the, for the high school project.
Totally different.
I was not involved at all with that. We basically are given the numbers and the funding allocation, and we work within those parameters. And they were, they were generous. They gave us some extra student stations there.
That was wonderful.
And we didn't complain because the money's allocated with it, so it was additional money.
Absolutely.
And that's special facilities compared to a bond.
Yes.
All right. Mrs. Wagner?
I do have just a question, and it may just be a title difference, but you had mentioned he's our construction design manager.
He's our
I'm the construction manager. Greg will be the
He's our design manager. I'm sorry.
Okay. On which projects now?[1684.61]
On all of them.
Okay.
I am only Crescent City PK 36. I know it's confusing, sorry.
Yeah, sometimes I get, I see a lot of your faces quite often up here, and I'm just trying to, so I think, and I too, I mean, I think we're so far in at this point, you know, the options that we have in front of us at least are kind of, I think we kind of have to move forward. My question really would be, what can we do, and I think Phil had hit on this at the last meeting, what if anything can we do to avoid having to make this kind of decision if we're gonna be building in the future? Is there, and do not get me wrong, our district staff are wonderful. But when we're looking at one potential issue like not being able to get the zoning, potentially costing us up to $3 or $4 million, could we not have someone with that type of expertise? I don't know processes on hiring and all that, but...
Because this came up last night in the Land Oversight Committee, and, you know, we talked about it, you know, we got together and talked about it, then we came back and talked to the committee. But essentially, we have a number of professional entities that are helping to drive this train. I mean, building a school is a multi, multi effort of many entities, and we as a school district, I've never built a school before, by the way. This is, I think, a lot of our first school. We depend on people who know what they're doing and who can give us the best advice. Has there been some mistakes made? Evidently. But I guarantee you, moving forward, we, that will determine, you know, as we make decisions going forward, the people who we entrust, if we feel like they have not provided us the best service, that will end up in our decision making going forward. So to answer your question, we learn a lot, we've learned a lot, and people that should know this, whoever that is, then we have high expectations for them, and if they can't live up to those expectations, we will find somebody else that does.
And I guess my concern is if those, if the people you're referencing are ones that are getting paid by us to perform certain services, you know, and they're, you know, I don't want, and everyone we've dealt with is wonderful, and of course, I don't expect our district to all, I know nothing, I mean, I had my house built and I watched it, I didn't do it. So, and that's a far cry from a huge school like this for this kind of money. It just seems like it would be beneficial to have someone with a, I don't know, a construction background or some kind of that type of thing for our district, representing us.
That's what design management is. We hire them to do exactly that.
Like all districts.
But are they, but I'm talking about even someone that could review these contracts so that, you know, we're having questions coming from the community and from ourselves, but they're not necessarily, I mean, my questions are not the most educated of questions because I don't know the business. I don't know which things to question on. So I'm just saying, I would love to have someone that I know has done this, that knows these kind of contracts, to review the contracts, who knows the business, to know if somebody's, no offense to any of y'all, but to know if anybody's, you know, overcharging or maybe omitting something. And, you know, I know the Bond Oversight Committee is there, but like he said, they're getting things, most of the time, they're looking backwards at it. I just, I'm just wondering if there's anything that could be done to where we do have somebody that's got a background in this kind of stuff. This is not our last school, I'm presuming, and if that would be helpful, because designing is one thing, but doing some, somebody with an overall, and I don't know, maybe that's what you do, but...
It went out of bid, am I right?
Ma'am.
Bid, in the process, initially.
Yeah, yeah. It's been out, but also, I do want to say, Mr. Kelly works very closely with Mr. Bowlen and with Travis Woods in our maintenance, maintenance director, and we, all three of them sign off on any changes, they review everything, and, you know, and we pay Greg's firm to do exactly that, to give us advice. And Mr. Bowlen, that is his, probably 99% of his time now is spent on these projects, so.
Well, and I, because I thought you were with the building.
No, I'm an architect, I'm not a contractor.
You're one of the architects.
All school districts in the state of Florida, most of them, unless maybe Miami-Dade has their own building crew, I doubt they do, but they hire construction management managers to manage projects, so I said that.
Well, James is a construction manager, and Greg Kelly is a design management firm, that's exactly what their job is, is to work in a fiduciary way with us, to give us that expertise.
Okay, and that, and that helps me a little there. I just, I just want to make sure that somebody's working on our behalf so that we don't have to go, are we gonna lose 900,000 or...
Absolutely. He's the architect, and he also oversees the process and works very closely with our construction manager.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Leary.
So if I can help, Ms. Wagner, you know, having done a lot of projects and been through a lot of construction, you know, the first thing that's done when you go in and you, or you're in the process of either purchasing or you purchase the property, is you look at two things, and that's, first, the land use and the zoning, is it consistent with what you want to build? And then, second, the environmental, what environmental impacts do we have? Did those things, some of those things not get done? Yes. But I feel confident, as the superintendent says, that they won't happen again. And if they do, then the five of us will, you know, deal with it.
And that's why we have this phase-in process, because we go through this entire thing. We, you know, went through a whole process for phase one. When we go to phase two, it's all a new process. I mean, we, you know, we entertain new people, whoever that is, for that next phase. So it is like three distinct phases that, what we learned from phase one...
Carries on.
Should carry over and benefit us in phase two.
And I've never really seen a project yet that didn't have anomalies, where there were, there were problems and change orders and decisions made. I talked to Greg earlier about this today, and just, you do what you can. I don't know that we've ever seen a zoning problem like everybody's making this out to be, but I get it.
Okay, so I still can't quite wrap my head around the numbers. So the projection, Ms. McDaniel. So the projection for Middleton Burney for next year is 1,046. Does that number include pre-K students?
It includes pre-K, ESE, but not VPK.
And how many classes of VPK do we have? Two?
Typically have two. Actually, two, they currently have two.
Okay, so the, so then the 1,046 becomes two classrooms of pre-K larger, correct?
The one paper that Greg referenced on the website has 1,100 student stations, is what it says. And then the projection without the two VPK classes is 1,046. So you would have, you would have the additional two classes to cover your VPK students based on just numbers.
You would have them, yes, for the next year, but that could well be where Mr. Matthews got the 1,098. If you add the VPK, if you have, if you have 15 and two, that's 30, that gets us to 1,076. I can see, I can understand a concern there, because you don't want to build the school and have portables. Now, I also know that when we started building, it was not, there were not 1,000 kids in that school, maybe 900, so...
We can't count VPK.
DOE determines his numbers.
But we have to assume that we have those students. But they don't assume that. So it could come to a point where maybe we look at a VPK center in the South End, just like Mellon is here, and in the West End, because it's gonna happen everywhere, so...
Okay. Okay. Mr. Dollar, just for clarification, when you spoke to us, you referenced you all having met last night, and did I understand you to say that you all recorded that meeting?
Yes.
And that some of the question, all right, and that will be available for the public to view, starting?
It should be up by tomorrow morning.
Okay, by tomorrow morning. And you did say that that will answer a whole lot of our questions that we may have?
Some of them.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
Don't answer your questions after you vote. If you got the question, you might want to hold off on vote, and you don't spend $70 million and then get your questions answered.
No, no, I was talking about for the public to be, yes, sir, for the public to be educated or to, to understand the process and where we're going. Yes, sir.
Can I make one question or a second question? So, Mr. Kelly, just to, I guess, repeat what I understand the answers to have been and make sure that I haven't misunderstood, is it your statement that the number of student stations was basically established by the state based upon the enrollment that was in place at the time that the applications were made?
Yes.
So the number of stations you're building was the maximum number that the state would fund?
For the high school, it was. For this school, we projected 50 more students and built it for that size.
DOE had to approve that number, correct?
Yes.
That's what I'm seeing, DOE's that problem.
So DOE, one way or the other, DOE essentially controlled or established or had, I guess you'd say, major input on the number of stations you could build?
Yes, they already did all the numbers.
Yes.
So if you'd wanted to build 300 more stations, and in the case of you, the school board just saying, well, we think there's gonna be a lot of growth, so we're gonna build 300 more stations down there.
Not in this, not in this case, no, sir.
And they would not fund that. They, they're looking at what they have projected.
They're not funding it.
I mean, the money, not funding, the monies, yes, that came through the bond, yes.
But DOE still controls the number of student stations.
They wouldn't allow us to do it?
No, no.
All right. Okay.
One final question, and this is, I shouldn't do this, because Cardinal religion never asks a question you don't have the answer to, but the design of the school, is it such so that it's amenable to addition without?
Yes, yes.
So if in the future you do have significant increase, you, the school is being built in a fashion so that you could add on to it, and it's susceptible to that? I understand that additions are never, you know, you don't like to do them, but this is one where the design of the school would permit you to make a logical design change that could accommodate additional students.
Yes.
All right, any further?
So, Mr. Kelly, if the school that we visited in Baker County, I know it was a special facilities funding, so it's different, but there was a room that we walked in that was very large, that they were using just for a teacher workroom, because it was extra space, but it was special facilities money. Is there a room in the Crescent City Elementary School that's not designated as a classroom or rooms that could possibly use for classrooms?
Yes, yes.
So, so in all actuality, we can increase the number of student stations on our own based on the layout of the building that we are gonna build?
There are resource rooms, skill development labs, there are other spaces that don't carry student stations that you can utilize.
As student stations, okay.
Thank you, that was...
Plus, it's built, it's gonna be built to all the new safety standards, plus it can be used as a shelter, and if you rode out hurricanes down there like we have over the years, and the bridges shut down to Palatka, you know, you got a safe, good facility there to keep people safe in and alive.
Okay, Mrs. Wagner, any closing comments before we call for a vote?
No, no, I don't.
Mr. Leary?
Madam Chair.
All right, no further questions? Are we ready to vote? All right.
You have the, I don't think we have a motion.
Oh, no, we don't, we don't.
You want me to make a motion, Madam Chair?
Student stations are at the school.
I believe it's 1166, is that correct?
Yes.
1166.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. You guys, you've been standing up there a long time, last night and today.
Well, the bond committee forgot about me.
Thank you, James, appreciate it.
I'd like to thank you guys. Thank you once again, too, and thank Mr. Holmes for meeting with you guys to, like we ask him to. But, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we proceed.
So do you have to list what option you're making the motion?
Option one, wasn't that it?
Scenario one.
Scenario one, the recommended scenario one option.
It's to, for clarification, make sure I understand the motion, it would be to move forward with the GMP with the understanding that in the event something should happen and the, the school, that zoning and annexation and so forth are not achieved in August, that our maximum out-of-pocket would not be greater than 895.
That is correct.
Or 895, 305, as set forth in scenario number two.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motion by Mr. David Buckles that we proceed with scenario number one for the GMP. With the statement that was made by our attorney in regards to not getting the annexation or the zoning, then we would not be, I guess, you didn't say penalized, but we would not have to deal with scenario two.
Our out-of-pocket would not exceed the amount...
Will not exceed this amount.
What will happen is if we get there, when it's approved and we haven't done this, it's gonna probably double or triple soon.
Okay, and it was seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I. Opposers? Motion carries. A man. All right, we are now ready for, oh, no, you gotta, E7.
A E7.
Except it. It was in the consent agenda, well, we just voted, so let that go. All right, F13?
Me, too.
Thanks, Greg. Oh, we voted, we...
Yes. All right, F13? Who's going to address that one?
Well, I just have some comments and some questions, and then maybe a recommendation.
And we have Kim Mann come back up.
Yeah, yeah.
Kim stuck with...
The fund balance.
Ma'am.
The fund balance.
Yeah, well, on the general fund.
Okay.
So, you know, as I, we have three months of data here that Ms. Mann prepared for us, and she just started, you know, doing this process in the last three months, correct?
Yes, sir.
You took this program over.
Doing both sides of it.
And one of the things that, in my two hours of going through this and really trying to understand it, and talking to Rhonda last night about nine o'clock, bless her heart, at her conference, is that we are approving budget amendments after the fact, and not just $1,000, $500 things where there's a transfer, but, you know, specifically, as an example, under out-of-county travel, you know, we approved a budget originally of $223,000 plus, and in-county travel of $52,000, so for a total, you know, travel budget of The budget amendment was done, and I guess it was done, you know, and we're now looking to approve it, correct?
Correct.
I mean, but it's already in the account. So the proposal is going from 223 to 306,000, almost $307,000 in out-of-state travel, and 84,000 in county travel. And, you know, honestly, for a school district our size, consolidation and declining students and the whole thing, you know, percentage-wise for our budget, I think that's significant. And I think that, and this is me, y'all may disagree with me, that there ought to be a policy in place that the board has, that for an amount to exceed some percentage or some, you know, minimum amount or maximum amount, that it comes to the board before the transfer has taken place. And, you know, I just think that it's incumbent upon us and our fiduciary responsibility, both constitutionally and statutorily, that, you know, we have control of the budget and that we understand. And, you know, I mean, I was pretty surprised about a number of things in here, you know, and I won't go into all of them, and I'm not, you know, I understand this is the way it's been done, but, you know, I don't necessarily think it's the right way. And I've never, either as a staff person, worked for a commission or a board, or boards and commissions I've served on, has this been the policy. And, you know, and I just think that it's, you know, it, to me, it's just, it's not...
Good government.
And, you know, the other thing that I'm concerned about, and I think that you all ought to be aware about this, and we'll be, obviously be discussing it in our June 26 Board Workshop, but, you know, we've, the last two years, our budget has been, we've been budgeting in a deficit, and, you know, based on what Mr. Odom's presentation to us was a month or more ago, is that, you know, we're looking at 100, just to do what we're doing now, and this doesn't count any of the ESSR money that would need to be replaced, we're looking at about $192,000 deficit. In addition to that, as I confirmed with Ms. Odom last night... thousand dollar deficit. In addition to that, as I confirmed with Ms. Odom last night, our avalorum value and income is going to be about twelve to fourteen percent higher. Well, what that means is that our funding from the state's going to be twelve to fourteen percent lower. So, we're looking at some pretty significant budget decisions from the standpoint of, you know, coming into the next year, and of course, there's going to be ancillary costs and, and different things with the new schools that, um, you know, you can't always anticipate that are going to happen. So, um, I just bring this up, and we can certainly discuss it in more detail at our workshop, but I, I would certainly like to see the board, you know, consider, you know, a policy that addresses the budget amendments, so that we have a better control and understanding exactly what's going on.
And I was going to mention, um, because there's two different words, so budget amendments are these, and those are like where we increase or decrease the budget, and it's got the descriptions and everything with it. So like, if we get a new award letter, or we get a special grant from somewhere, so those are your budget amendments. But then our financials, and I think that's what you're talking about more of, is our financial statements, and I was going to show you the general fund budget, and then any transfers or anything that's happened, uh, out of here. And they more, look more like this, and then it's going to show you the travel and stuff budget behind it. So, I think what you're talking about, too, is maybe having controls in place to monitor what goes in and out of certain ones. So, so I, just to throw out an example, we don't allow anybody in transportation to move money out of fuel or out of oil. Like, that's one of ours, that you can't move money in and out of without our permission. So, y'all could also designate something like that for travel, that would require board approval before we move money in and out. But it's more of a transfer instead of an amendment. Amendment's going to be like increasing or decreasing the board-approved budget, but the transfer is more of an internal with what's already there, if that helps at all.
But in reality, would you, you, we, we are increasing the budget. I mean, and I just use that one example.
But that's like internally, so like, if you had forty thousand dollars in your departmental budget, there's no controls currently in place for you not to move that to travel, but it's still within your budget. Uh, budget amendment's usually like an increase or decrease in the overall budget. And, and these transfers in the financial statements, that's just moving what you've already been allocated typically, if that helps at all.
But it's kind of like the credit cards. I mean, somebody can abuse credit cards, even though ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of the people that use them would do, would, would use them appropriately, there may always be someone that does something wrong. These budgets are about the same way, and then, and the budget transfers and, and.
Yeah.
And you could put a roadblock in place, but I, I, I don't know that, you know, our state auditors, we usually have auditors in the building.
About eight months a year.
Yeah, so really, I mean, I, I understand what Phil's saying, that's a prudent way to go, but we don't want to stop finance from being able to cover the, you know, it's going to have to be a, a, you know, done in an appropriate fashion. I, I know that'd be a fluid thing, that, where you don't, you're not stopped from being able to do something that you really need to do.
Right, and I'm, that's not what I'm suggesting at all.
I got you.
You know, what I, and, and if you look, if, at the percent of the budget spent on, on the financial, just for the general fund, you'll see that, and we're, you know, three months left in the, in the fiscal year, you know, we're at a hundred percent, ninety-five percent, ninety-seven percent with a lot of these, and so it's incumbent that they have to make those inter.
Internal transfers.
Internal transfers. I understand that, and that's not what I'm talking about. You know, it's just when it goes to an item where it's a significant amount of money and something that, that we had originally adopted. Um, and honestly, um, you know, and, and that, I mean, people have access to this, I think it's just incumbent that we know what's going on, and that we have some policy in place. Um, and we can do it rapidly. We could even include in that policy where the board could be polled, you know, where we didn't have to have a formal meeting, we could be polled and say, hey, you agree with this transfer? Are you okay?
I'm laughing at none.
Finally, the sun's up.
No, 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 there's a, there is a, there's a, I think there's a provision where you can do that. We did it, we did it in the county commission.
Don't poll me.
Anyway, um, at, at any rate, I'm just throwing this out for the board, you know, to discuss, and, and again, um, I, I do think we're going to face some real challenges in our upcoming budget, and that, you know, we're going to need to look at places that, you know, what is our priority? And for me, that's the classroom. So, anyway, with that, Madam Chairman, I'll move approval of F thirteen.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Phil Leary.
Thank you, Phil.
That we accept item F thirteen, and second by Mrs. Linda Wagner. We're ready to vote. Further questions? All right, ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I. Motion carries. Okay, and our final one is G two.
Can I pull that?
Yes, sir, G two.
What is that? Let's see, yeah, G two. Oh, yes, ma'am, the contract with, uh, with the youth resource officer. So, I just wanted to make the board aware that, um, you know, this, and I hadn't had a chance to talk with Travis in detail about it, but, um, but, and it's been on my mind, um, an incident that occurred when I was at, um, Melrose Elementary a few weeks ago, and, uh, Ms. Pickens and, and the superintendent were there for the wars program. Well, after it was over, you know, I walked into the office, because I wanted to talk to the maintenance people and the staff about, they, they put a whole new gym floor in that gym that was built in nineteen twenty-seven. Well, my mom played, graduated from Melrose High School, played four years, lettered four years on that gym. They still had the wood in a pile, and I said, well, could I get a piece of it? You know, I just thought it'd be cool to have it. Anyway, so I was standing there, and this very rude, irate parent comes in, and I mean, he was berating the staff. And so I stepped in and I said, well, maybe I can help you, I'm a school board member, and he said, no, you can't help me. Anyway, it, it turned into a, a situation where they were calling for a youth resource officer. Well, there's, as is my understanding, I did not know this, that Aquila and Melrose share, share a resource officer. Well, that resource officer, I don't know where he was gone, so they then had to call QI Roberts. Well, fortunately, uh, the principal and was able, they basically, you know, get, you know, had the parent go out, and they ended up trespassing from the school. But in that, in that time period, something really significant and bad could have happened. Um, and, you know, and Mr. Holmes might have been trying, might have had to bail me out, you know, jail, but, um, uh, it, it just bothered me that, that we didn't have, you know, a youth resource officer available. As I was driving State Road twenty-six coming home, you know, thirty minutes later, here comes a, you know, deputy with lights and sirens on. You know, um, we're paying a lot of money, and, and it's important that we protect the students as much as it is our staffs there. And, um, when we, when we move into remodeling and everything, I'm going to recommend that we have a bulletproof, bulletproof glass up and door where people can't just, you know, reach across a desk or a, you know, a railing, and could grab one of those. You know, I, I think that, and this, this was in a, this guy was absolutely in, in some very vulgar things, and it just, he wouldn't stop. And, um, and wasn't going to stop. And anyway, so I, I just want to make sure that in this contract, that not only, you know, our, our, our staff, you know, our administrators, our support staff, and that they feel safe, but that they have access to immediately to a re, youth resource officer, because things happen, you just never know when. Anyway, so that, that's my, my, go ahead, Travis, I know you, 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 you got the whole story now.
I actually do have the whole story on that. Um, I've, I actually spoke with Ms. Lundie about that same incident, and I'll be honest with you, a person in the, I don't want to go into great detail as how, how it went out, but the, a person who called for help, um, instead of calling like the comm center or nine-one-one, where they could get the closest person in the area to go, called a deputy at another school directly. So that's what caused.
Okay.
The delay.
That delay, yes. So, but we've, we've spoke about that, and that's been, been taken care of, so.
It would not be out of the ordinary to have a few incidents like that during a school year. You have people who, I've, I've taken Bowie knives off of parents that come to school. I mean, it's, bad stuff happens, but we've got the Guardian program that looks to me like Brevard County fixing to emulate what we're doing, and I, I think that, uh, but, you know, we, we have an opportunity with this new foundation, with, with the foundation that we've started again, that, that with the old school board office, when the board transferred that to the foundation. You know, the one we had, Edge for Financial Excellence years ago, or Student Excellence, was taken away and started, a, a school was tried to, they tried to form a school with it, and the school went under, and they lost the foundation. Then we developed this other foundation, and it, and as it goes along, it may be able to help pay for additional law enforcement officers and bills over time. So that's, you know, the old Campbell Building, they, they paid over six hundred thousand dollars back to the.
That you got to remember.
Kids on that. But, but I mean, it's got a, there's opportunities to do that in the future.
When we initially started hashing out the whole thing about the, um, Guardian program, remember the, the sheriff said that they, the deputies, they just don't have them. You know, it's, it's a limited, uh, amount of them. Um, you know, I, I printed what you're talking about, I printed the numbers, and the guardians were to kind of make up for that, but we see where the, where the, uh, I don't want to say ball was dropped, but for lack of a better term, where the ball was dropped, the person should have called the nine-one-one and, and get that person to live. But, but our, our sheriff did tell us, I mean, they just don't.
And again, we're allocated, we're allocated a certain amount of money from the state, uh, state schools money.
Right.
And I believe we used practically all that to cover deputies.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, and, and, and again, as we're building these new schools or, or remodeling down, and whatever we're doing in the future, um, and, and especially the elementary schools, you know, um, you've got the, the school secretary that's out front, and usually there's just a, a deus and just a, you know, a railing, um, and people can go walk, walk around and go through. I, I think that, you know, we, we should have something where, you know, they're more protected, you know, and that they can talk through, you know, a hole in a fiberglass. I know that's not, but, you know, this, this situation, really, I've been thinking about that, and I just, yeah, it just, I, I just think that that's something that we need to try to protect our, our staff and our support staff, you know, even more so. Um, and that we, you know, and, and, you know, those schools were built, what, thirty, forty, fifty years ago. So, as we look at new designs and, and look at, at school safety, that, you know, maybe we could incorporate that into it.
New, the new lock checks are going to take place, I guess, in the next year or two, where the state will come and do random lock checks and, and check to make sure we've got updated locks where they can't, people can't get into our facility. So, that'll be state, done by the state.
Madam Chairman, I'll, I'll, I'll move approval of G two.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. The move that we accept item G two by Mr. Phil Leary, and second by Mr. David Buckles. Any further comments, questions, concerns? If not, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I. Motion carries unanimously. We are now in emergency session.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we accept, um, item L one, the overnight trip for Palaca Junior Senior High School cheer. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item L one on the emergency items, the overnight trip for Palaca High, and second by Mr. Phil Leary. Any concerns? All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chairman, I'll, I'll move approval for item L two, um, for the Interlaken Junior Senior High School to also attend that, and, um, obviously, it's a time-sensitive.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept emergency item L two, the overnight trip for Interlaken Junior Senior High Cheer, and second by Mrs. Linda Wagner. Any concerns? Questions?
It is a different camp.
Oh, it is a different camp.
Yeah, one is in Orlando.
They're going to two different places.
And one is at World Golf Village.
Gotcha.
Okay, all right. So, we're ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I. Opposers, none. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, I'll move acceptance of item L three, out-of-state travel, building, thinking, classrooms, conference. Justification, explanation.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item L three, out-of-state travel, building, thinking, classroom conference. Uh, justification, time-sensitive. Second by Mr. David Buckles. Questions? Discussion? All right, ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I. Our motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chairman, I will move approval of L four, the updated verbiage for the approval of the twenty-four twenty-five St. John's River State College authorization agreement.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept emergency item L four, updated verbiage after approval of the twenty-twenty-five St. John's River State College, and second by Mr. David Buckles. Discussion? All right, we're ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I. Opposers, motion carries unanimously. We're now out of emergency session, and we have no unfinished business, so we are now ready for our discussion of new business. All right, item one, appoint board member, a board members to serve as representative and an alternate on the Florida School Boards Association Advocacy Committee.
Madam Chair, I'd like to, to nominate Phil Leary.
Okay.
As the representative.
I'd like to put him on all these boards.
All right, Mr. Leary.
So, and just, and just so y'all know, the, uh, superintendent got elected to the small school consortium, and he is on their board of directors now, and, and will, that, that's huge for us, I mean, to help us.
All righty. So we do need an alternate, Mr. David Buckles?
How about Holly Pickens?
I'll be an alternate.
She'll be an alternate.
All right, and Mrs. Holly Pickens will serve as the alternate. Okay?
Do you know what roles these, as far as being an alternate and everything?
Just fill in for me all the time.
No, that's what I was wondering.
All right, item number two, appoint a board member as a representative and alternate to serve on the Putnam County Value Adjustment Board.
Do we have to vote on these, or we just nominate?
Uh, we've nominated in the past.
I'd like to.
We have to still vote. All right, well, let's go back to number one and vote.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
All right.
Second.
Been moved by, uh, Mr. Phil Leary that item number one, he serves as the representative, and Mrs. Pickens serves as the alternate. Second by Mr. David Buckles. Any discussion? Here are none. We're ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I. Unanimously.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend, uh, Linda Wagner serve as a representative and alternate, uh, to the value, Putnam, no, excuse me, as, as a representative to the va, Putnam County Value Adjustment Board.
Second.
All righty. It's been motion by Mr. David Buckles that Mrs.
We need an alternate, don't we?
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll do your alternate. I'll.
Okay.
When you can, I'll be there.
Okay.
Chairman will be the alternate. Okay, good to go.
All right, I love it, when a plan comes together. All right, all right, all in favor? Oh, we, we need a motion.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phil Leary that Mrs. Linda Wagner serve as the representative on the Value Adjustment Board, and Sandra Gill, y'all serves as an alternate, and it was seconded by Mr. David Buckles. Any discussion? We're ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I. Motion carries unanimously. All right, in the past, we've nominated new board.
Judd Newfield.
He, he agreed to do it again. Give me his first name, I remember.
Judd.
Judd, okay, Judd.
Moved to appoint, um, Judd Newfield to, as our.
And I'll second that.
Representative.
Okay, all right, motion by Mr. Phil Leary that Mr. Judd Newfield serves as our citizen to represent us on the board at the, uh, Putnam County Value Adjustment, and second by Mr. David Buckles. Ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all so much. All righty, uh, we can ask Mr. Attorney if he wants us to do it like we've done it in the past with the, you read them all, and with the, you read them all and then we, okay?
Okay, Madam Chairman, I'll, I'll move to approve.
No, advertise.
Advertise N4 for amending policies 1242, 1281, 1362, 2210, 2271, 3242, 3281, 3362, 4242, 4281, 4362, 5410.01, 5517.01, 8330, 8405, 9211 per the Neola Special Update May 2024.
I second.
Can we discuss this though?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we just want to go ahead and get the, all right. A second is Mrs. Pickens, right? All right, it's been motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept all of the policies listed in, in 4 to be amended, advertised amendment. And second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All right, any question, comments? Now, this is where you can go ahead.
Um, so I had several conversations recently and I'm just, a lot of the time when we get these Neola updates, it's, you know, one word and it's no big deal. But I had some, a lot of questions answered today as to why we have multiple, basically the same policy in different locations. I get that it's under administrative sometimes and then under staff and then under students. So it's applying in different ways. And my concern, and I realize that this is coming from Neola, they're not always perfect and I get it, but I've got one in particular, which is actually three, that, that has to do with employees bringing personal property to school. The sentence after saying that they may wish to bring things to, the personal property to school, it says, "This practice is permitted provided it's understood that the school board is not responsible for any loss, damage, or destruction only when it, only when said property is used in the performance of the person's duties." So in two of them, it says it that way, which is improper. It's basically saying, "We're not responsible for anything they bring as long as they're doing it under their duties." There's a third one, same exact thing that says the exact opposite. So my, my question really is, and, and none of this was changed. The only change the Neola made is adding the statute number at the bottom. This is not a big deal. But I was wondering if we can at some point schedule maybe a workshop where we can look over, maybe everybody can beforehand look over some policies and kind of make them more consistent? Or do we, or is it best that we just sort of piecemeal that as we come across them?
As long as I can remember, we've, we've had a policy or policies that would allow employees to bring personal property to school and if that property was destroyed or stolen, the district could choose to reimburse them for.
And I have, I have no problem with whatever we want the policy to say. It's just we've got in two places, it says one thing and the other one it says the complete opposite. I doubt there's going to be, you know, a lawsuit over somebody's personal property that they brought to school. But it just, it's saying one thing twice here and one thing once. And, and those little, little nuances, I think we just need to fix.
We, we could come back, I mean, unless there's other than we could.
Well, the board attorney could just call Neola and check on it and see what the deal is.
You can't, why?
It's not a, it's not a change.
Right, that's.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
The problem with, the only change that we're voting on. Yeah.
Contact.
And there will change though. So if you're talking about somebody bringing $100 chalkboard to school and having it go away, that's one thing. But if they bring a $5,000 computer to school, their personal computer, it goes away. And your policy says they are going to be entitled to reimbursement. That's, that's, that may be a bitter pill to swallow. So my only suggestion was, first of all, I agree with you 100%. It should be standardized. I don't see how you can justify saying that you'll pay for personal property of an employee under administration and not under the student section. You either are or you aren't. But if you're going to pay for it, I would at least think you'd have a cap on how much, the value of the property that you're going to pay for. If somebody was to bring a flat simulator to school and it costs $10,000 and it gets knocked off a table and broken, you didn't. Unless someone specifically approved bringing that, that item to school and agreed to accept liability for it, you may find yourself buying things or paying for things that you didn't really anticipate paying for.
Well, they may, Neola may be doing that so they have wiggle room for different reasons. I'm not an attorney, that would be, you know, something that you and Linda.
That's wiggle room, all right.
Yeah, that's a lot of, you can, you can't, you might, yeah, you might, you can, you can't, yeah.
Well, in answer to Linda's question, I think it would be worth, I, I don't know how we could look them up individually, but when they come up, being able to read them and make, you know.
Make sense of it. How we want to.
I mean, but we could assign them and then come in and discuss it at a workshop. I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
You know, and it's, I know that we're just looking at the, the changes that Neola is putting in here and I, and I, I'm thankful that they do that for us because I would not want to have that responsibility. But as, when I'm actually able to read through them, if I do notice something, I'm trying to bring it, you know, to the board's attention, that's all.
And they should have an adequate answer because they're, we pay them to keep us aligned our policies with changing legislation.
And then this would be our starting point with this one in particular. But certainly the, the scenario that we're given, one thing, $10,000, et cetera. So we start there and then Mrs. Michael can certainly, once we have talked about it, because we, these services, we pay for Neola to do what they do for us and, and, you know, can spell it out.
So would Sue next, because this is to advertise it. So could it just be pointed out to us that, that one separately at the next board meeting? Or do we have to advertise the change?
Yeah, which doesn't change anything.
Oh. Okay.
And then advertise that.
That's good, yeah.
Yeah, so that's something for a later time.
Yeah.
And the, the last.
Be done.
What's that?
I said medic, be done.
There was one other, I think, on this list that I'm just curious because the green is the added items and this is on the anti-harassment policy number 1362. This is another one of those that is in multiple places, but they're with subtle changes. A lot, some of my questions were answered, but there, the, one of the, the inclusions under bullying was social exclusion. And I know that some changes are from Neola and occasionally we get some from the district. But I just wanted to confirm if anyone knows, is that a Neola change? And if so. They are.
Social distancing?
Social exclusion is, is now under bullying and.
That would be the same thing, I would guess. I mean.
I, I, I've seen it in other locations and I kind of have a little bit of an issue of how vague that is. But then my other question, we're marking out severe or persuasive enough to create. And this will go along with something I bring up in my comments today. But that language, according to some of the drafting notes, it says they're taking out the severe or pervasive language. But yet later in our same existing policy, it's got that. So I think that may be something we need to reach out to Neola on as well. I did not have time to do that myself or I would have, because I think they may have missed that because they're telling us they're taking out that severe and persuasive.
And yet it's there.
Language, and yet it's, it's there not in a, in an added portion, but in an existing portion. So as far as what the, if I can just know where the social exclusion, I guess it came from Neola. If we're just voting on the additions from Neola today, I'd say we, it's in the same spot as the, the prior one I brought up.
The superintendent is the chairman of the board of the, you know, for NEFAK which has Neola and I, I'm sure Susan and he could find these out in a pretty hurry, pretty good.
Susan has a good working relationship with them, so.
Good deal.
You could, um, reach out to them.
And I'll try to, I'll try to send you something, Susan, that kind of condenses what I've put together today. Since they're all over in different locations, so.
Okay. All righty.
Yeah, I have nothing further to discuss.
All right, now we need to vote. All right. All in favor?
I think we do a roll call.
Oh.
Roll call. Advertise already. District 1.
Advertise.
2.
Advertise.
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 Okay, we are now ready for our report.
Good to you.
Mrs. Pickens?
Um, I will be glad to start. I just would like to congratulate all the graduates and all the senior sponsors and the administration. The graduations were all wonderful. I'm, every year I am so impressed by the fact that the graduations are so different and unique to the schools and that's a great thing. I did have to miss the QI graduation because I have my granddaughters. I'm happy to report that I returned them in perfect shape after a week. I did have to take like a few moments to myself, but it was wonderful, it was wonderful. Last night I did go to the bond oversight committee meeting and I really, really appreciate the work they're doing. It was also extremely beneficial to me to hear the questions that those, I believe it was eight other people posed. Some of them not questions that I would have asked and I found it to be extremely helpful. And I, for one, would appreciate when we have especially something really large like a GMP or again, that, that it does go in this order. I would prefer them looking it over and me at least here, we, we are not allowed to talk, but to go and hear what representatives that we've chosen, what their, how they felt about it and the questions they asked, I, I thought was invaluable and I think that that's a good progression, at least on certain things. I think it, I think it's very beneficial. That's just my opinion. I also spoke with Mr. Marini from Ajax last Friday for, last Friday afternoon, he took my call. I, I was pretty impressed and he talked to me for over an hour on that. And I've, I've just got to say, I'm extremely impressed in that he would take time out on a Friday afternoon to talk to me. And then I'd also like to say, I know Ms. Myers has, I'm not Myers, Ms. Wagner has a lot of legal experience, but I don't necessarily. And like the superintendent sets aside time for us to speak with him individually, I think it would be beneficial for us to have a set time to speak with Mr. Holmes too on any legal thing that we had. Not that we can't call him, but other, he has a, he has another job besides just being the school board attorney.
I think we do have, you have some office hours here that you're available.
Do we?
We had actually talked about setting, I mean, I haven't been very diligent in my last, in my chaotic move, for the first time in 50 years, I'm homeless and officeless. And that may sound funny to you, it's not. But, and I'm in the process of trying to rectify both, although getting the home is going to be a little more extended than, than the office. But anyway, I'm, I had offered and said that it would, I could make myself available every Thursday morning, like from 9 to 11 here at the district. And they could, they said they'd find me a location and I could field questions from anybody. Or I'll set time individually for, you know, a time just for, for board members, if that's, if that's desired, you know.
What I would prefer, and it, and you've, you have done this, if there's something that comes up and you feel like we need to know, just, just call us and give us a 30 second heads up, you know.
He did that yesterday.
Yeah, that's, sometimes that's just as easy.
But we'll, I'll do the, I'll do the Thursday morning hours. And I don't have anything that's reoccurring on Thursday mornings. So I'll do the Thursday morning hours. If it turns out that's not convenient for the board members, we can find a different time. But I'll, I'll make myself available on Thursday morning here at the district.
And if y'all could schedule that through Susan, just so he didn't have to worry if we show up for once. And then we also have mayhem staff that needs to meet with them too. So if everybody can go through Susan, let her be the.
Okay.
And we could do it by phone too.
Yeah, I can do it by phone too.
Sure.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, it's, it's, you don't miss things until they're not there. My cell phone doesn't work in my building because of the metal roof and even though we have wifi. So, and as you know, we've outgrown ourselves over there. So we are in the process of modifying a building that we own up on 300 Reed Street, the old Cricket Building, well, that building. So I'll have a phone again. Right now it's been, it's been a little bit chaotic. And my home office, like I said, has gone as well because my home has been sold. So, yeah, it's been a little bit challenging, so, but I, I'll be rectifying that in the next couple of weeks. I'll be moving into the office and, but I'll make myself available here in the meantime on Thursday mornings. Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Holmes. Mrs. Pickens, thank you. Mr. Buckles?
You know, I, I got a little loud earlier with the, you know, my desire to see things move forward in South Putnam. But I have been there and, and been in those facilities and when the bridge wasn't open to come back to Palatka to, to family and friends and, and you're having to be shut down there. And Holly knows what that's like because she served down there too in shelters. I know what it's like to handle train derailment victims, being triaged into the high school there and life flighted and bringing a couple of bodies into the school. And, and you know, it's, Crescent City has to have a place, if there's a tragedy down there, something occurs, they've got to have a facility that's, that's under, built under state guidelines that are approved or, or shelter approved, it's got food service, everything, all the immunity. I'm talking, I'm telling Noah about the flood, you understand. And I just, at, at some point, I, I went through SREF and Florida school laws on site selection and, you know, I, it's just not, the zoning thing is important, it should have been addressed, but it's not going to be the be all, end all. I, I think, I've never seen a construction project yet that didn't have problems. And, and this is going to continue even with the next project. We'll, we'll have something, whether it's more gopher tortoises or wetlands or whatever the impact, it's not uncommon to have problems. So I, I, you know, as a young 28, 30-year-old administrator, I went through the last bond issue and people in the 80s, early 80s, they, they were losing their mind over the bond issue. And, you know, I had this conversation with the superintendent some years ago that, you know, it's, the vast majority of the people seem to really want really good schools, but some people just can't get over it and that, that the public actually voted in favor of, of building schools. And it's just, it, it's where we are and it's what we do and it's not going, it's not going to stop. And I don't know if anybody's looked at the, the latest planning commission meeting over here where, in East Palatka, where they're proposing, what was it, Phil, 600 homes, 700? 700 homes? And, and I watched it, I listened to it, people crying, you know, not wanting homes in their neighborhood and destroying their farms. But you look what's happening in Malacca and Johnny Morris has bought a few thousand acres down there and you don't know what's going to happen there. But be that as it may, we've got a task and the task is, the voters said, build these schools. And it's, it's going to take a while to do it, but we're getting there. And I just, you know, it's like I've told you before, ad nauseam when QI Roberts was built, there were people losing their mind. built, there were people losing their mind, that was going to be in the middle of wildlife right away, but I, I understand. I, I think people should question authority in government, that's, that's what we're about, but at some point, you've got to think about the kids and the students that are, you're going to serve for the next 50 years or 60 years in these schools, and you've got to move forward. So with that, I, I just, just move on. I, I would like to say that master board training, we've talked about this before, where I've been through so much of it over the years, that first thing they tell you is to have all your questions answered when you come to a board meeting, and, you know, but it's, it's not always that easy as they say it is. You know, you were very, I've never really pick it, picked through Neola, but that's an interesting, interesting situation you brought up, but be that as it may, I think we're moving forward. I just, I talked to Greg Kelly earlier, I've never seen people go so, be so upset over zoning issues like they are, but they, they just, and, and it's, it's just, I don't think it's about building the school, I think it's about just not liking it. And, and that's the bottom line, and I understand where they're coming from, but I, I, I have a job to do, and like Phil said about the parent coming in, we've got to have safe schools, so if somebody comes in with a gun and starts something, we've, we've got to have the facilities up to the new state's safety standards and requirements. And with that, I'll pass on to Ms. Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
And I know it's getting late, I'm going to try to keep this one short. So I have, I've, I've talked with Mr. Holmes and with Susan about a couple of procedural things. I've been having a lot of procedural issues lately, but, and some of y'all may have received a, an email recently regarding the Title IX changes and a, a resolution that had been suggested. I have something similar that has no, nothing to do with that email. It was something I'd been approached by multiple people in the community requesting that I bring a similar resolution to our board. And we can go into this more at the next meeting, but I, I am asking, and I think this is the proper procedure now, I'm asking our chairman to direct the superintendent to add that resolution to the next agenda, if I'm.
As an agenda item.
As an agenda item.
Okay, and this is.
Is that the right language to use?
A resolution regarding.
It's a resolution regarding the Title IX changes.
Oh, right here. I read.
That's not, that's not, that's, I don't know where that came from, but it has been.
Yeah, here it is. Whereas.
Yeah, it's similar to that, very, very similar, but it's not that one.
Didn't the governor, didn't he coming out with a policy on that?
Well, I just, I just emailed each of you some recent information we've received from Neola about that, but again, it talks about the court action that's going on, and I believe there's been some litigation filed by the state of Florida against, there's been six states that have already filed litigation, but they are in the process of doing so.
There's, there's, from what I understand, there's like 20, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, there's over 20 states that have filed suit against, trying to stop those changes from being implemented under Title IX. Several of them, I couldn't tell you the exact number, even as of today, received favorable injunctions saying they do not have to make any changes. This resolution basically, you know, lays out much, it's very similar to the one that was emailed to us, but it, you know, basically lays out that we don't like the, it puts a stance out for our board that says we don't, we don't like the federal government redefining sex as it's put into our sexual harassment policies and that type of thing, and that we, you know, we support the lawsuit on behalf of the state of Florida.
Let me ask you this, for the resolution, I'm asking our board attorney, who should draft that resolution to bring back to the board?
Anyone can. I mean, in my opinion, a board member has a right to request that any resolution drafted by a board member or whoever they should choose be put on the agenda. Now, what the board does with it's going to be a whole different ballgame.
Sure.
But I think that, you know, a board member, elected board member has a right to ask the superintendent to put an item on the board agenda for, for potential passage, but then, of course, the board's going to do what the board thinks it needs to do with it, and I'll try to be up to speed in terms of where things are as of that date with the whole issue.
Then there's the federal government.
Would you like to do the draft, draft that?
I have.
You already have?
It's, it's, I, I can't take credit for all the language, because it is something that's been passed already, but Sarasota County has already passed one virtually identical to what I've presented. There's also a school district in Texas who's done the exact same thing, and they're just kind of, it, it's just a matter of, we want to protect, and I want to say this very clearly, and I believe this board and our district want to protect every employee and every student from any kind of harassment, bullying, any of that. And I fully do believe that that's everyone's intent. The, the problem, one of the problems I personally have is the federal government attaching yet more strings to any funding and that type of restriction, but also going in and simply redefining sex. This, this, Title IX was written in 1972, it very clearly at the time, which, you know, maybe is a little bit in the past from now, but it doesn't feel that way. You know, it was very clear, it was very distinct, and it said, you know, sexual harassment, and it, and yes, things have, it defined sexual harassment by defining sex.
Right.
While the definitions of sex and related issues have expanded, and I completely understand that, and we're not trying to take, or I, anyway, my position, I'm not trying to take any protections away from our students, but this has overarching implications, while the Biden administration says this does not affect sports, that they're going to come out with a new ruling on specifically sports, it does have everything to do with gender identity, which is based on what a child underage who, you know, can't vote, can't sign a contract, whatever that child says has to be abided by then by our school officials and teachers, facilities, things like that. And I know in Putnam County, we've, after some conversations today that were very helpful, we've already addressed certain issues like that in our school in a, in a very positive way, I think. But in proceeding to make any, any changes that might be foreseen to be in compliance with Title IX, that's the purpose I'm, the, the reason I'm bringing the resolution, is it basically says we support the lawsuit, and, you know, we do not feel that any changes need to be made while there's pending litigation.
So could you provide a draft to that to Susan, and then we?
I have already.
Okay. And then we can bring it back to the board as an agenda item in the next meeting.
Thank you.
So the federal government's trying to change Title IX?
Oh, not, oh, most definitely.
Most definitely, yeah, because, because we, we were out of compliance years ago, and we built softball fields for girls and became, came into compliance, but, you know, it's, I, I know what you're saying, it's, this is just like what I was talking about when you have tax increases and things like that, people go nuts over some of this stuff. It's just, it just is what it is.
This goes a little deeper.
It's changing times, I know, we got to.
Yeah.
Got to watch out for our kids.
What you call yourself.
And the community has, has made it very clear, the ones that I've spoken to, and, you know, they knew how, how I campaigned, they knew my positions on things, and I, I have to draw a line at some point with my own conscience, and I, I just think it's something the board could at least make a statement on. If nothing else, we have a good discussion, the board can vote however the board votes.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No, 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 I'm, I'm done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, very quickly, you know, and I, I agree with Mr. Holmes, and we had this discussion earlier this week about a board member requesting something be, you know, added to the agenda, and I guess, you know, that, the way it's been done in the past is that the board member would bring it up under their board comments, and then that there'd be consensus. You know, I really think that the, a board member should be able to have something added to the agenda. Every, you know, commissioning and boards I've worked with, that's been the, the policy. I'm just curious, you know, what the rest of the board thinks about that, and we don't have to talk about it today, we can do it some other time. And then the only other thing I have is that the development that is going to be approved in off 207, 700 units certainly is going to impact, you know, the school system, and we, we just need to get ahead of the game on that. And not only that, you know, I'm aware that there's another big project that's, that's going to be coming, that, that's going to be another, it won't be 700, but it'll probably be 200 homes. And, and so what has happened is that the county, in their infinite wisdom, four years ago, took both sides of 207 from US 17 all the way to the county line and changed the land use designation from agriculture to urban service. So that means that any residential classification and most commercial classifications would, all you have to do is reason, go through a rezoning, and since it's already in the comp plan, that it's consistent, you know, that that, it's almost, you know, almost undebatable, it's going to pass. And so what we're going to see, at least in that corridor, I think, is over the next five years, you're going to see a tremendous amount of development, you know, come, and a lot of that is because they can build more affordable houses here and people can commute, you know, San Andres, Inter Jackson, or wherever. So we, we, we may want to think about, you know, I know we have a contract on the old Brownie Pierce School property, don't we?
No, couldn't be said.
Or.
Yeah, I think it's one of these, do you remember, I think it's got a long, a long Pierce period?
Yeah.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be big enough, I don't think.
No, and I'm not saying, but we, we just need to look at, at some of these things and, and, you know, get ahead of the game and make sure that, that we're prepared, because, you know, D.R. Horton, they, they'll build 700 houses in probably three years, or, or maybe depending on the demand, you know, or less, and, and then the chamber vice president got up and spoke during that planning commission meeting and said, hey, you know, our goal is bringing a thousand something new jobs to Putnam County, and our number one issue is affordable housing, which I understand, and he's right. So at any rate, I just wanted.
Those are proposing 4,000 square foot lots, 40 feet by 100 feet.
Right, right, yeah. Just the five-foot setback on each line.
Rick, we probably, we probably need to put something on a, on a, on a five-year plan, because the state will sometimes fund that if that comes into fruition, if you've got it on a five-year plan.
It's going to, I mean, the, the board, the board meeting in July, I mean, I, I'm very confident it's going to be approved, and, and they're, and they're already, because I represent the, the, the lesee of that property, and it's already been told he can't farm another, he won't be able to farm another crop on it next year, so they're, they're, they're going.
I think I heard 400, 400 million pounds of potatoes, I think, is what I heard they producing.
Yeah, I think that's wrong, but anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, real quick, just so that we can move on, and, and Mr. Attorney, you will follow me, and then the superintendent did get an opportunity on Saturday to attend the Juneteenth celebration that was at, held at the Cavalry Life Center, just food vendors everywhere, information everywhere on things that were happening, just, just a great time. A lot of the performing artists were products of Putnam. One of the young ladies that sang, I had her as a fifth grade student at Kelly Smith, and she's produced several records and things of that nature, so it was just, it was a great celebration. The other thing, at Palatka High School last Wednesday was the career fair, and initially I did not envision what I got there and saw, but this was an opportunity for Putnam County. All of the schools were represented, they had their tables, people were actually signing up, that they were interested in learning to drive a bus or have the experience, they were signing up at schools to come for interviews or whatever, and, and I thought that was a superb way to, to promote yourself, for lack of a better word. Again, ditto to what Mrs. Pickens said regarding graduation, just great, all right? And we do have been allowed in the past to add things to the agenda. In the past, we put on there regarding recognizing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so it can be done, what you've asked to do, they do that for us.
Well, and maybe you could provide some clarification, because I know that our previous council talked about getting consensus to bring, for board members to put something on the agenda, so could you maybe render, at whatever time you would like to?
Sure, I'll, I'll provide an opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done.
Yeah.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing further.
Okay. Mrs. Superintendent?
I think the movement's got him speechless.
All right, Mrs. Superintendent?
Yeah, I'll be very brief. Also went to the Juneteenth thing, I want to thank Lafara Davis.
Yes.
Who organized that, and is a great thing, and we actually, I think we recruited two possible teachers there while we were there.
Yeah, it's all your work and, working the crowd.
In the last week, I've been on the road a lot, just hearing the good stuff about Putnam County. I was in Dallas last, not this weekend, the weekend before, and I was speaking about a lot of our, you know, our, our instruction, what we're doing, especially our trend walks and that type of thing, and, you know, very well received there, and that was to a national audience, the superintendents and so forth. And then I flew back and went to Orlando and spoke to the national, or the state, they call it FS3, is School Safety Specialist Conference, and of course Travis was there, but spoke to them about the stuff we're doing here, specifically our Guardian program, and some of the things that are kind of unique to Putnam County. So got a lot of questions and all, so Putnam County really stands out there. First, first one to start the Guardian program, the second one, second board to approve it. We had another district approve it first. And I was actually, spoke to the, we have a state, we had a number of districts come to our, our administrative office at CLO this last week, I'm running, my days run together, Computer Science Festival, where they are actually coming there, you know, to be trained in computer science. I don't know if I mentioned, we also have the, going on now currently, an engineering, what do they call it, camp, three-week camp, and if I already said this, just tell me, but they're building two electric vehicles there, that we sent staff out of California a month or two ago to build it and then take it apart, and then they shipped those two cars over here, and they're actually building them, and those kids, they're really kids who are, may not get an opportunity to go into engineering, so we're trying to really encourage them. 30 kids, Ashley, is that right? But, so it's a great opportunity, but to build electric vehicles, that's in the future. We did have our career fair last Wednesday, I believe, and at PHS, Black Junior Senior High School, had a number of departments, the schools there. Thank you, Sandy, for being there, I believe you were there and represented the board. And again, I think there were some employees hired, some teachers hired, and a great opportunity. And Ashley, thank you for working with HR and setting that up, okay? And then finally, I traveled a lot last week, I went to Cape Canaveral, I believe, Thursday night or Friday, and attended a, a conference from around the state on Space Florida, and essentially what that is, is an opportunity for our district, and you'll be hearing more about it, where through our STEM program, we can actually work with industry on building stuff for space, okay, like satellites or whatever they need, maybe some vehicles or, so there's a big market for that in the state of Florida, and you're probably going to hear more about that very soon, and we're working very closely with them. But I think our kids getting into the space business, we can use our welding, our building construction, and just kind of, you know, kind of adapt that to building stuff for space, and it's a great opportunity, so I'll keep you posted on that. And that's all I have.
Okay. Anything else to come before the board? If not?